This meeting of the New Hanover County Board of Education to order, please stand for the invocation and our pledge of allegiance, please.
We'll have our invocation. Lord, we thank you for this day, this opportunity to come together to discuss the educational needs of our children here in New Hanover County. We thank you for all the many blessings that we all enjoy, provide us wisdom and guidance in everything that takes place here tonight. In your holy name we pray, amen.
I pledge. I pledge. Praise and goes.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Praise and goes. Order. Ready, go. Left. Don't miss it. Forward. Arch.
We'd like to thank the color guard from Ashley High School for being here tonight. And at this time, I would ask that the cadets from Ashley, if you would come back up, we have a cordless microphone here. If you would give us your, we know it's Ashley High School, but if you could give us your name, your rank, and what grade you're in. That's good, you can do it from there.
Hello, everybody. I am Cadet Petty Officer Second Class Jefferson from Eugene, Ashley, and I am a junior this year.
Good afternoon. I am Cadet Petty Officer First Class Boyd. I'm the head chaplain at Ashley High School ROTC, and I am a junior.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Cadet Chief Petty Officer Hartley. I am a junior at Ashley.
Good afternoon. My name is Cadet Chief Petty Officer Duggan, and I am also a junior at Ashley.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Also, we'd like to thank Chief Hollins for being here. Thank you very much, Chief. And also, under Commander Chief Thomas Frost, and the Principal of Ashley High School, Mr. Jackson Norville. At the last moment, we had a, and I couldn't find a volunteer at the last moment, we had a problem with our National Anthem. The young lady that was going to perform that had a problem, so it was either nothing or me, so we figured it'd be better if you went with nothing. But, ordinarily, we would have that. Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please?
Donna S. Page.
Here.
Janette S. Miller.
Here.
Dennis A. Caddell.
Here.
Sammy J. Crowell.
Here.
Lisa B. Sett.
Here.
Edward B. Higgins.
Here.
Bruce T. Shat.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Any additions or deletions? Motion to approve?
Move for approval.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Item three, approval of the minutes from our regular meeting. Item A, our regular meeting, March 3rd, 2015. Would you like to do all these at one time?
Yes, please.
I move that we approve all of these minutes, A through D.
Second.
A through?
D.
Okay. Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, they are approved. Item four is recognition of achievement. Ms. Quaterbaum.
Our first recognition this evening goes to Ms. Tara Swakarow, a senior at Hogard High School. While at the Raleigh School of Gymnastics 2015 High School State Meet in January, Tara scored a 9.65 in the floor competition, making her our state gymnastics floor competition champion. Congratulations, Tara, on your state achievement. And we're going to ask Tara, if you would, go by and shake the board member's hands, please. Thank you.
Okay, next, we would like to recognize the winners of the 2015 North Carolina Azalea Festival Children's Art Contest. These students' artwork will be on display through the end of April at the Community Arts Center in the Hannah Block Historic USO Building. First place in the elementary division is Becky Girulami of Parsley Elementary School. Is Becky here? Okay. Becky and her art teacher, Ms. Suzanne Slode, and her principal, Dr. Robin Hamilton, recently traveled to meet Governor Pat McCoury at the Azalea Festival Proclamation Presentation at the Executive Mansion. So this young lady has met the governor. Second place in the elementary division is Sarah Hoffer of Carolina Beach Elementary, and her art teacher is Melanie Connor. Sarah, if you're here, would you please come forward to be recognized? We also had the third place in the elementary division, Danielle Swart of Forest Hills Global Elementary, and her art teacher is Lily Mosel. Danielle, if you're here, would you please come forward? Okay, we had an honorable mention in the elementary division that went to Brianna Griffin of Mary C. Williams Elementary. Her art teacher is Wendy Widenhammer. Okay, second place in the middle school division is Katie Whitmer of Noble Middle School, and her art teacher is Margaret Cooley. Katie, if you're here, would you please come forward?
There she is.
And we had one more honorable mention in the middle school division. It went to Shelby Miller of Noble Middle School. Her art teacher is also Ms. Cooley. Shelby, if you're here, would you please come forward? Okay, Shelby's not here. And our next recognition will be presented by Dr. John Wilmers.
It's my pleasure tonight to recognize eight New Hanover County educators who have achieved National Board Certification. National Board Certification is sort of the pinnacle of top teaching. It is a performance-based standard that a teacher has to work on for several years to achieve and to have their own work recognized for that high level. And we have eight new people tonight. Currently, we have over 400 nationally certified teachers in New Hanover County, making us one of the top counties in North Carolina. So if you'd like, please, when I call your name, to come up and be recognized. The newly certified teachers are Kamala Kirby. And Marie Edwards.
I know you. Now, ten long years ago, a group of teachers earned this certification, and then ten years later had to recertify, going through much the same process. And tonight, we have teachers that we like to recognize for that accomplishment. First, Shannon Lanier. Next item on the agenda, item five, is our call to the audience pertaining to agenda items. We've had no one to sign up, so we will move to item six, administrative personnel. Item A, administrative recommendations. Dr. Markley.
Good evening. At this time, I have two administrative recommendations. One is for the Assistant Principal at Bradley Creek Elementary School. It is my pleasure to recommend Rachel Greer. Ms. Greer currently serves as Lincoln Charter School Principal of the Elementary, Middle, and High School. Previously, has served as an elementary lead teacher, a principal intern, ESL teacher, and a fifth-grade teacher in Hendersonville. In addition, she served as an interim teacher in the Escondido Union School District in California. She received her liberal arts and science degree from Palamore College, liberal studies with a minor in history from Cal State San Marcos, College of Arts and Science teaching credentials also from Cal State San Marcos, and a master's from Western Carolina University. It is my pleasure to recommend Ms. Greer, who is here in the audience.
Motion to approve?
I move second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed?
Ms. Greer, if you'll stand up. I understand you brought a guest with you?
Yeah, this is my husband, Chris.
They are leaving the mountains and coming to the coast. Our second recommendation is from an interim position. Now typically, for short-term interims, we don't bring those forward, but this one, on a maternity leave, will be through the remainder of the year. It's from Ms. Cheryl Cribs. She's being recommended to service the interim Assistant Principal at Murrayvale beginning March 23rd for the remainder of the school year. She is retired with 28 years of service in the Hanover County. She has served as an interim principal, assistant principal, music educator, teacher assistant with the Hanover County Schools. Her last assignment before retirement was at Bradley Creek Elementary as an Assistant Principal. So I'm recommending Ms. Cribs as an interim Assistant Principal for the remainder of the year.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed?
I don't believe Ms. Cribs is in the audience.
Thank you. Next item, item seven, Head Start. Item A, Head Start Report for Mr. Higgins.
Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to report that... There are currently 260 funded positions in Head Start, and we'll get this right this time. 102 three-year-olds, not third graders, but three-year-olds, and 158 four-year-olds, which is because you have to take the four-year-olds before you can take the three-year-olds. You can't... They had an average attendance of 89%, which exceeds the 85% requirement, and they have 26 special needs children, which is what we're required to have. Now, a couple of announcements. New applications are available at most elementary and pre-K centers. On the website, under Parents, click on Pre-K Information, so that parents can apply to be considered for Johnson. The fiscal year for Johnson will end at the end of this month, April 30th. On the 23rd of March, they had a mock review in preparation for the visit by an auditor for environmental health and safety. I was present during that walk-through. The school is primarily in good shape. There were a couple of stained tiles that were pointed out that need to be replaced. Issues such as potentially not all the electrical plugins were covered, although it turned out that in some cases, they were covered with clear plastic instead of dark plastic, so you didn't know that they were in fact covered. And there was a couple of issues with some window exits, but all in all, we seem to be in good shape. There will be a visitation by the actual auditor later on this year. The staff attended North Carolina Head Start Association's annual conference in Raleigh on March. Also, the school has received from the New Hanover Oil and Water, a grant available through the county to provide outdoor learning environment to pre-kindergarten classrooms. Grant will be approved by the county in July. Funds would allow us to bring the indoor learning environment to the outdoors. Then, there is a self-assessment process currently underway. So far, 40 parents have submitted surveys. There's a survey that was given out at the policy committee meeting, and what was asked was that people, these individuals, come by and visit the school and rate such things as, were the kids engaged? Were they responsive? Did they seem happy? Those kinds of things. It's a fairly, I won't say detailed, but it is a comprehensive sheet. Finally, I would have you note that next week, April 12th through the 18th, is the National and State Week of the Young Child, and Celebration Department is planning a no-sleeves magic show for all classrooms. Mr. Chairman, that's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins. Any questions or any comments from Ms. Higgins? Thank you. Item eight, under Information, item A, Report, was my name there, and what I wanted to do was just take a couple of minutes and bring you up to date that I attended the National School Boards Conference a couple of weeks ago, and brought my book tonight of all the different work sessions and so forth. I was talking to Mr. Hans earlier about the number of work sessions, the number of exhibitors. I was amazed at the number of security topics, I'll put it that way, and security products that companies are now selling to school systems. But a couple of the main speakers, it was a three-day conference, the day one was Arianna Huffington, but unfortunately, she bailed out. I don't know what happened, she didn't show up. But Jane Pauli took her place, and she was really good. David Poe, I don't know how many of you are familiar with PBS and the Nova series, Yahoo, I think I read in what he found, Yahoo Tech. He was really interesting, but the highlight to me was the third day, and Montel Williams was the speaker. And he's also a national speaker for public education in this country, and he's quite, I don't know if you've ever heard him, he's very, you know, a dynamic speaker, and, you know, enjoyed that. I feel like I picked up a lot. I'll bring in some stuff and share with you. I've already got some samples from Mr. Hans on ways you can secure doors, all these types of things from these companies, that they send, everything from paintball guns that shoot tear gas, little round balls, to things. It's amazing that the number of products. But also, the topics that were discussed, there was a lot of discussions on international comparisons that we hear quite often, is comparing our public school systems to China and Finland and other countries, but there's so much there that's not brought out. But I'll bring in some information on that. Just wanted to touch base, you know, and let you know about that. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I just would like to reiterate, I think you will agree with me that these conferences are well worthwhile, that there is an opportunity not only to share with other school districts, but to hear what other school districts are going or doing. I've had the opportunity to attend a number of these conferences. I did not go to this one, but I just would encourage any board member who has not been to a national conference, that they ought to consider next year is in Boston, I believe, and I would encourage as many as could, because I think it is a wonderful opportunity to learn. I do believe, Dr. Smith, the idea with the robots, I think that the training, well...
That presentation tonight on what they're doing at TRASK?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, Project Lead the Way, yes.
Right. That was something I saw a couple of years ago at one of the presentations. I think, you know, those kinds of things that we can bring back, even though you may not, we may not adopt it immediately, it lets us know what's going on out there, and an opportunity for us to explore ways we can reach out to all our kids.
Dr. Markley, we've given presentations on the national level in years past. I'd be interested in knowing what you would recommend for us to have as topics in the future at a national conference, because I'm sure we've got a lot that we can share with other districts.
I would recommend, we just did a presentation, in fact, at the state conference related to our bond campaign last year. If we get what we think we're going to out of the reorganization at Mosley, I think that would be a great presentation to talk about what we want to do there. There are a number of programs. Project Lead the Way will be in its third year. It's a great partnership with the Chamber who's here tonight. There's a number of things that we're doing in our district that I think would be great spotlights.
I think we need to plan now for next year's conference, because I'm sure they don't wait till the last minute to have their topics.
No.
About a six-month lead time on most of those.
They'll be asked for at Pub in June.
Also, entertainment. I was amazed at some of the entertainment from different high schools around the country that were there, providing entertainment, and the first thing I thought about was the steel drum band from Hanover. That would be different and unusual, something they would have never seen before.
I think you send in a disc, and they basically audition them through using that disc, so, yes, I would suggest to Mr. McAdams, if he's still here, that they might want to think about putting something together.
Okay. Item B, policies for first reading. Mrs. Nichols.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes. We have two policies tonight. The first one is Policy 4140, but we determined that it should go into the student section, and it will be 8300, so if you have questions about it, there are only some editing changes here, but Dr. Holliday, would you like to address this policy?
Yes, ma'am. We're just, we're looking at all of the areas that involve health and human services in our school district, and this was one of the policies that was in another area that needed to be in, where the other policies for health and human services was. We do have all of our athletic training, our medical information, and all of the things we do with our school nurses in the 8,000 series. and all of the things we do with our school nurses in the eight thousand series. So this would be the logical place for it because we're the ones who manage those anyway. So we're just asking you to move that over into the eight thousand series.
Thank you, Dr. Holliday. And the second policy is policy forty-two ten on buildings and ground security. And Mr. Hans, if you will share the information, please.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair. This was a policy that we reviewed. It was a fairly old policy since its last review. So we went through, we changed some of the words around to make it consistent with the policies that we have today. And clarified some areas, particularly in paragraph number three. Just rewrote that and clarified that somewhat relative to building and ground security. There weren't that many changes to it, though. It's a fairly broad policy.
But there's a lot of work in security, and we know that from your conference, Mr. Hayes. So those are the two for first reading. And they are always online for input from the community as well as the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Item C, App City, Appendix C, Dawn Brenson.
As Ms. Brenson comes forward, this is coming forward tonight as information. It's a, and I'll let them go through their, tell you a little bit about it. But if it's something that the board is interested in, then we can bring it back in May as an action item.
He's getting set up. I'd like to introduce Tim Fields from Appy City. They had approached the Chamber with the possibility of creating an app for the Chamber and all the partners with the Chamber. The Chamber, I believe, is in the process now of creating their app. The Battleship has done an app for them. And it was an opportunity for the school system and each individual school to have an app out there. So we'll have our website, then we can also have an app, which has a lot of features that would help with communication to our parents. So what I will do is I will turn it over to... I will turn it over to Tim. He has brought some people he can introduce.
Yeah, first of all, I'd just like to introduce some of my colleagues here. First of all, we're, Appy City is who I'm the CEO, but I'm also the Chief Technical Officer of the Education App System. Here we have with us is Jonathan Weiss, he's our CEO. Scott Hansberry, who's our Chief Financial Officer of the company. And Melissa Creed, who's also our Head of Training and Technical Support for the company. So what we do, we got here to the city with Scott and Connie. We came here, we built an interesting system, which is a networking system of apps that communicate. The businesses that are part of that system are the Battleship, the Chamber, the Wilmington Tourism, the City of Florence, now the City of Carolina Beach. We're just finishing up the North Carolina Aquarium, the Battleship. They all have our app technology. So one of the things in the company that we started to do was, is like, the schools need this technology because we're able to give this technology to the school systems to communicate with all the schools together. So what we did, we put the prototype for you together so we can demonstrate it to you tonight. We built the, this is the Eugene Ashley system here. And what we do here is, these systems are totally controlled by each school level, but there's also a superior level, which is the school district. And we'll just run through the functions on it real quick, we've got a short time. So this is the home screen. So, you know, if you want to hear, find out about the school system, this is the information from your website from the school. We'll go back to the athletics, which are important for scheduling. So all the schedules can be put in, like here's the varsity baseball schedule. With the schedule, it gives them directions, time of game. We'll get into broadcasts. The students are able to broadcast the games through this system. They can actually be the commentators for the games, and the parents can live it. I would like that because my son plays soccer and he's away all the time. So I would like to hear the game and what the score is and everything. So these are systems that are interactive with the schools that we're building for them. If we go back, the navigation panel on the side is customizable for each school, for what's important to each school system. So if we look at faculty and staff, we can go to the English department. Each teacher has a login system where she can communicate with the system. So we look at Elizabeth here, system, this is copy, this is information from her website. All her general information and everything's in here that she has from her site. So if I go to general information, all the document implications, you know, from PDFs, from Word docs, to everything. She has her discipline contract. The parents can actually sign the discipline contract on the app and email it right back to you. There's no printing. We go back. Each teacher has, you know, like I said, there's multiple level login that's administered from the school level, from the principal level, all the way down to the athletic director, to the superintendent level from the district. So the communication from these apps are controlled at multiple levels. If we go over to the students, a lot of student information. You're printing a lot of student handbooks. The handbook's totally available in here. They can download it, print it, whatever they want. So for great document, you know, management for the school systems. If you even want to go to live sports broadcasting, let us pull this up. We're actually broadcasting from here. So complete broadcasting channels that are built into it to broadcast. So the students can be a part of the broadcasting to actually broadcast live games. Very simple, they can do it straight from their smartphones.
May I ask a question, please?
Go ahead.
I'm not technologically proficient. And I, can you explain to me what the difference between your app would be versus the homepage that we have for a school system with a page for each school?
Well, the app's going to do way more than your website, first of all. It's also a more secure system. But also, every parent and every student has this device. They don't carry the laptop with them. So they're able to download the app from each independent school. And that's the great thing because, you know, if I was a student, I want my own school to have my own app and that we're doing our own thing in our app and what's going on in the school system. But controlled from a district level. So this is a device. We haven't got into the communications part, but that's the really crucial part from the schools that I've already talked to that's critical about it. We have a really unique communication part in it that we're going to notifications. All right, we have multiple notification channels. So now the ADs and the coaches, the principal and everything, the parents can choose the information that they need most. If their son plays football, they chose football. So the coach can communicate to every parent, football. If practice is canceled because of rain, he can immediately send it out, and every parent gets it to their phone immediately. If you, school's closed, you can hit all and send it to every parent, school's closed today. In some of the principal meetings I've been in, one of the issues were bomb threats. And he says, "Look, I can get this phone stop ringing if I can send to every parent's phone immediately and say, 'Look, everything's okay,' and send it out." So by the parents, the teachers, and the students having the app, the communication is quick, is precise, it's certain channels so that you're not being intrusive to anybody. So all these channels can be designed by you. You can let us know, we can turn the channels on, and they can communicate to the athletes, they can communicate to the boosters, and you can communicate to whatever channel you want to put in it.
So apps are for phones, and webpages are for computers, and we need both?
Well, the app technology is where everything's heading toward. You know, we're building cities here with the app technology right now. And the app network that we built in the city, there's over three hundred and seventy-five thousand people in it. The Isaiah Festival is totally, right now ran this week by the app because everybody's on the app. They have a, right now in market here, as they're coming in, they're downloading the app. The app's being downloaded every day. So if a student can download the app and get all his information, because that's where every student is at. He's in it, he's Snapchatting, he's Facebooking and everything. How much more important it is for every school to have an app for their student to stay connected to them and communicating with them, not only them but the parents?
For us, it wouldn't be the app versus the website. It's another means of communication.
That's why I said we need both.
Yes, we're going to do both because people still want to see on a big screen and want to see the website. What's nice about their process, they're able to, with their databases and their technology, pull all the information from our website into the app. So it's not like the schools or the teachers are having to recreate. They're not having to manage their website and then manage an app as well.
So is the person who's in charge of our website, the different parts of our website, are they in charge of the app?
We have to work that process out. But yes, we'd have it at the technology level, there'd be one level access for the district, you know, with different people having access because communications having access at that level is also would be good. Then at the school level, you'd have different levels of access at each individual school. Going down to each individual teacher would be a decision that we'd have to make. Do we want to say initially, do we want teachers to have apps right away? We may not want to do that right away. We might want to start with the district and the school sites and then move down to the teacher's sites, assuming teachers, you know, are wanting to do that, and that's something that we want to ask the teachers to do. But it's not doing something, it's not extra work. They're pulling the data from the teacher's website into the app, which is what he has done here with the one that he showed you.
Let's just say like sports programs. You're needing to send out the form for the sports program for them to fill out for permission for sports or anything. So the AD has the ability to log in. And with the push notifications, they can send anything. They can send the PDF or the document to sign. They can send a complete book, video, whatever they want through the push notifications so that the people get it immediately from their phone. They can fill it out and actually send it right back to them. So there's no taking the paper and printing it and doing all these things. The documentation's all digital and returning back to you complete.
We have apparent communication. And one of the things we talked about was how to streamline some of those first-of-the-year forms. A system like this just rolls right into that process.
Can you tell us what the cost would be?
Well, that's the best part we get to tell you, it's zero.
I like it. I'm glad people come here and tell us we can have something for no cost.
Now, there is, it's no cost, but there is advertising.
Oh, okay.
And so this would be a first for the district in terms of commercial advertising.
We have talked about advertising. We've talked about, well, we have advertising for our sports on the fields and whatever. So I think...
You've got a relationship with another school district in South Carolina?
Yeah, we've been testing another school district scenario. And they're so excited about this because this is more ad revenue than you've ever thought of before because through this system, we can do app distribution. There is multiple level of app distribution companies out there, such as Khan Academy and all these things that want to get more closer to the school systems. So we have the ability to bring you advertisers that you would have never thought of and come into your school system. So you're talking about national advertisers, not just local advertisers, which are going to be a big thing, but you're talking national advertisers. With the way Connie and them and everybody have come on board and bringing this city together, you know, we talked to Heather and them over at the Battleship. They'd love to be connected to your school system with the history of their Battleship. The Aquarium with Robin and them, the marketing team at the Aquarium. They are so excited about a school system that can connect to this so that they can be a part of it. Because how great is it for a class to be able to download the Aquarium app and go through all the education stuff that they want to teach? They already have the product. It integrates straight to your system. The Battleship has the product. We have multiple products throughout the southeast we're already building. We're in thirty-five cities already, and we're moving very fast. The education side was something that came to me from my son, who was in school in South Carolina, when the school didn't have the funds to buy the soccer uniforms. And they got defunded by the calorie count on the food. They weren't allowed to sell certain foods at these events anymore, and they were losing all their fundraisers. And I was like, hey, let's take this system that we developed for cities and develop it for the school systems because we already have advertisers that want to be a part of the city systems. But how much more would they want to be a part of the education system to really put their products and what's important to you? And you're the best advertising there is. You just don't have the device to do it. This is the device to do it with. We're talking magazine, book distributions. Universities are going to want to advertise with you because you've got the kids that are going to come to their university. So they want to advertise in your system to show their school off. So it opens a whole new territory for you.
The app, you said, was free. I assume there's a splitting or distribution of the revenues from the advertising?
We have revenue distribution, which on the school side, it's fifty percent for you. It's up to the school board. We present the advertisers to you, especially the national advertisers. It's your decision. We leave that decision on your part, but we bring the advertisers to you.
What are the, I see that you can turn off push notifications through your settings. What are the, what's your ability to turn off the advertising? Can you upgrade to a paid app and eliminate the advertising? Because most free, you know, I don't know if any of you played Words with Friends or any of that kind of stuff. You download the free app, and you've got to navigate through a ridiculous amount of advertising in order to get to what it is you're trying to get to.
Well, let's just show you. So your sponsors, our sponsors are your local community, okay? So it's not typically a banner advertising system. So if I go in here and I want to know, hey, places to dine in the community, here they are. I can scroll through them. These are people, Mayfair, Tropical Smoothie, Slice Life Pizza, I can hit, pull it in. These people are already part of the network through Connie and them at the Chamber. So you will be dealing with businesses that are part of your community already. It's a system where they are able to log in and give the students and the parents the best deal possible.
No, but what I'm asking you is the in-app advertising.
Okay.
So you're saying that they have to select that tab in order to see the advertising? So there's no advertising that pops up as you're navigating the app?
The only one is the banner system. But they actually have to pop it up to see it. It doesn't, it's not intrusive to it. You can see here, this is a typical banner put in for this athletic banquet. It stays down. They actually have to click on it to look at it.
Who's in charge of procuring the advertisement and determining the cost of the advertisement?
Well, that's part of the development with us. We sit down and go forward with the cost and everything because you have a number of schools. We actually want to deliver apps to every single school you got. Jonathan, our CEO, could probably address, there's more people involved in this than just what are here. And he probably could address more who's involved in this situation for your school system.
Most systems that I've seen like this, I mean, Arizona, for example, they advertise on their school buses. And there are companies that do that, I guess, similar to what we're talking about here in that they procure the ads, you know, the money, the whole work. The school system really does nothing except approve the ads to make sure there's something they would have, you know. I'm not recommending we advertise on the buses, but I see a similarity.
So Dawn, does that mean that Appy City is in charge of the advertisement and determining the fees for advertisement, and we're not responsible for that?
No, what he said is, in the initial process, if you guys agree you want to proceed, in the initial process, we would sit down, the board and Appy City, we would sit down and figure out what the process is going to be as far as how are we going to do the process for us to approve the advertisers and the fee schedule? So that's something that we would work together, come to an agreement. This is what we're going to do, and then they implement it.
Okay, and we would do that initially, but on a ongoing basis, procuring additional sponsors and different, are we going to have a different fee for different sponsors, or is it going to be, how is it normally done?
Well, there's two parts. The banner ad system's a different part, but the general database system is the businesses that are more local to the community being able to connect to the school system to present deals and things like that. They're in a central database, like if you're looking for places to eat. And the actual person has to be looking for those things. But they have the opportunity to present special deals to the schools directly through that. So set fees for schools they want. There may be some schools close to, businesses close to one school, and that's who they want to advertise with. And they may not want to advertise with a school that's thirty miles away. So there's centralization and geolocation to the schools specific to them. So pricing of the schools and pricing them as all the schools and things are something that we would work on that would be appropriate to you, that we would design for you. The advertising dollars for the banner systems and stuff are more, GEICO would be interested. Walmart would be interested. All these other companies that we bring to you and say, "Look, these are companies that would like to advertise, these are the fee structures that we think." But not only that, but the educational part from the community outside being able to connect to you. Jonathan can say a little bit more about that on the people that are involved in this system that we're building.
Well, as far as the advertising, it's my understanding that you already do it. You sell ads in your yearbooks, which is essentially the same. This is just much more interactive and much more interesting to the advertiser. As far as the investors, Tim and I founded the company, the Education App. We brought on Scott to crunch our numbers, and he became an investor. And as of yesterday, Scott, we have both of our district attorneys from both sides of the bridge, John and Ben David, have become investors. So we really believe in what we can do for the school system. So we jumped on board with both feet.
If you want to go forward, I would recommend that Wayne, Dawn, two board members, get together to sit down and hammer out what the agreement looks like that we can bring back to the board.
Let me ask, well, quickly. I see here that you, in order to log into the site, you have to enter an email address and create a password, pretty standard app. Do you track those email addresses?
No. No.
Do you, I, I would like to see, I'm, I'm assuming you have terms of agree, of agreement
Yes.
that the, the app, or the person who downloads the app and intends to use it agrees to?
Correct.
I would prefer to see that before we consider moving forward.
Yeah, the, the one thing on the terms of agreement, it's all done through the app market, so there's set terms and agreements already for iPhone and Android markets for Google Play. So those are agreements that are met. When they download the app, they have to accept the permissions and the guidelines to it, that's incorporated into the app technology already. The legal side of that has already been done by Google and by Apple and by the government to...
Yeah, but sometimes you're agreeing to, to waive your rights in terms of tracking cookies and tracking and all that good stuff, so, you know, I don't necessarily, I get, I have apps on my phone, my, my boys have apps, you know, I, I don't need any more junk email, to be quite honest with you.
Well, there's a thing to it, I think you're probably also concerned about them selling email addresses.
Correct.
Like you do kind of phone numbers and stuff.
So I...
And that's something we definitely would not be agreeable to.
Correct.
The big piece of putting the email in is for the push notifications. By you giving that information allows the push notifications to you. But yes, I agree with you.
But the devil's in the details.
Yes, we definitely want to make sure that that's...
We've built a separate server just for the...
And that's one of the, that's one of the things I want to tell you, is like, there's nowhere on the app where they submit an email address or anything to us, the users, they don't do it. The only people that log in are teachers, the administration, those are your login to log in and communicate with the app and operate the app. So there's nowhere in the app where, when it's downloaded, that it asks for an email address or anything from any individual. We don't go there, we don't do that in the cities, I mean, Scott and them can tell you on any of our apps, we don't do where you log in and we try to track your email, that's not what we're about. And in your system, it doesn't need to be about that, because you're exactly where every advertiser wants to be with you, because you have the demographic. We did a, we had Disney come to us and talk to us and said, "Look, we do Disney on Ice, that's the elementary school and the middle schools." So in, in South Carolina, they were like, "We want to sign on to advertise, because that's the target market we're at." So they only advertise in the elementary school and the middle school, so they have direct target market. These people are waiting for this, because you have the system that they need to be marketed to, okay?
I would like to make sure that somebody from technology is also part of that.
Dawn will be...
If you can hear me or not, but Connie, would you be interested in like the comment that I've looked at at this point?
Yeah, I mean, I think what we would say is it's a great way to bring our community together, we haven't had any issues at all with security or doing things that we don't hope them to do. It's not just us, it's the City of Wilmington, it's the Business Bureau, it's the, the, um, factions that you mentioned already, and so far, we're moving forward, it's new for all of us. I mean, I, you may not certainly understand, I had to go with that. So it's something we're all worried about, but they are very willing to work with us as we go along, or to make adjustments as we ask. I would say that for ease of use for every kind of these, we ought to explore it. Even if you decide not to do it, you ought to really look at it.
I definitely think it's worthwhile to not have to go through the website to get individual school information. I think it, it sounds like a great, a great idea.
And go ahead and keep it, say that. They do, and you know what I think we have to prepare communication committees to be able to access information on a school level, not just the district level, and, and have it be more user-friendly. So it's very easy to hit an app and get to the information, so...
And I could tell you personally that Tim has made it user-friendly for the rest of us, normal folks. So, because I found it very easy to navigate, very easy to administer, you know, in a, in a two-and-a-half-hour training system, you'll be an expert.
And the, the whole system is, is set up on, we're, we're set up on the same system as Khan Academy and everything, Google App Engine. Every school district has a secure server system. So the one thing is this collects data over the, over the years, school system, pictures, videos and stuff like that. It's your video library, it's your history, you have access to it to recall all that stuff. So we see it as like taking your year for two thousand sixteen, or fifteen, whichever, and storing. So if the class of two thousand fifteen comes back to two thousand twenty-five, their class reunion, they can turn it back on, and they can go back and experience the whole year. So it's, it's logging all your history for your school systems and everything. So imagine using the video broadcast system, we'd have that back in the day when Michael Jordan was playing up there, and you can go back and see the high school games. Imagine the kids being able to learn broadcast system. Not only that, but we're giving each school a system where students can learn to build apps, be able to log in, to set portals, and teach children how to build apps for the future. We have that system in place now, it's a complete system that computer departments at schools can have, and students can go in, and we encourage them, we want to reward these students for learning how to build apps and deploy them. So the apps that are built that we see and that you see that are great apps for the community and stuff, we would like to publish one for you and start to get these kids to understand and build this technology, because we have it for them now in place and ready to go.
Who initially built the, the prototype for Ashley? Who pulled that information? So you, did that, how long did it take you to pull that together?
About twenty-five minutes. Very fast. It connects real good, API integrations. There's a lot more the system can do, it's far more advanced than what you're seeing right now, but there's a lot of API integrations. There's ticket sales, if you want to start generating, doing your ticket sales to your high school sporting events. All these things are in place with this already, they're in there, it's just us teaching you how to use them, and if you want to turn them on and use them. So it has complete, a lot of arsenal in it and a lot of different API situations that you can use in it.
So training for our principals would, would be part of the agreement?
Yeah, we train everybody.
Okay.
We're actually, we're full-time your support staff, we totally do all that, but we actually go to the schools and train the individuals, and then they can train. And we want students to be involved in this as far as news reporting in it, school news and things like that. So there's a lot of things in it and channels that are, can be controlled for the students and stuff like that to be implemented in it.
Sounds exciting.
I think it is interesting, what I'd recommend to the board is that, Dawn, if you and Mr. Bullard and Ms. Quaterbach with Public Relations Department, if you three will set a time to look at this, and then I'll have two board members there to also take part, and then we'll just report back to the board as to findings of that, if that's agreeable with everyone.
Sounds good.
Okay.
You guarantee training for some of us board members? Get a refund?
That's what I was going to say, you might want to have some board members who are proficient with technology involved in those discussions.
Take you more than twenty-five minutes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Exciting.
Okay, I've been asked if we could take a five-minute break at this time, so at this time, we will take a five-minute break.